Welcome, everybody.
This conference will now be recorded.
May Planning and Zoning meeting. You want to call it all, please?
Members Sutherland.
Here.
Member Corral.
Here.
Member Debat East.
Here.
Members David E.
Here.
And Vice Chair Cleo.
Here.
And Chair Ferber is absent with notice.
I'll rise for them. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to your republic, which stands one nation under the principle of liberty and justice for all. That's what I'm going to do on the call.
Thank you. All right. Any additions, deletions, modifications? None? Entertaining motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any comment? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Public comment? Stand in line. Hearing none. Have before you the approval of minutes. Chair, I'll entertain a motion.
One modification, Mr. Chairman. On page six of page three at the bottom of the court record form, I made a motion and I seconded
Well, that was really good. You really wanted that one.
I think I've only one here.
Very impressed. No, that really shows you what, yeah, we know your style. Take control. So you modified that to reflect the correct person who made the first or the second?
Yes.
And the second, I should say. Any other comments? The motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. Again.
Second.
Okay, let the record show that he made the motion, did not second it. And the motion is with the change in the minutes, correct? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Selection of chair and vice chair. You guys do, you want to do ballots or the chair will entertain a motion? Either way.
I'll make a motion to, for Shields-Ferber to act as a chair. And do we need vice chair as well, Mr. Cleo?
You do, you can do them separate, I guess.
I'll do it together. We're here. So Ken Cleo for vice chair.
Seconded.
Moved in second. Any comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Like sign. Motion carries. Kristi, I assume that is, we can bypass the ballot procedure and do it by motion. I thought so. Thank you. Okay, next thing on the agenda is the discussion of the artificial turf ordinance. Can any changes be made? Yes? Okay, we're done with that one.
I just want to add, I just found out last week, there is a bill that's going before the governor for the state to preempt artificial turf on single-family residences. They are designating DEP to come up with rules. So what's coming down from the state, assuming the governor signs it, will be regulations for single-family on, for artificial turf. So at this time, my recommendation might be to just wait and see what happens with that because if we make changes, we may just end up having to change again depending on what comes out of DEP.
Yeah.
It may be a while because obviously when they mandate that state agency make regulations, sometimes it can take a little while. So if there's something urgent we need to change, that's a different story, but I haven't heard that there's anything urgent from state.
Is this a burning issue in town? I mean, the only place I see it is on A1A at one house with a 5,000.
I wouldn't say burning. We've had a few more applications. We've had a few more applications than I've seen in the past here recently. I know a lot of people aren't aware that you have to have a building permit for it. So that's the only cause of the issue for that, but aside that, it's not been too big of an issue.
I would, yeah, I'm in favor of tabling it until such time as they, I mean, no sense wasting it. However, I do, I will opine that the limitation that is set in the current ordinance is, is a bit restrictive, especially in light of the advances in the, in the new turfs that are out there. So anyway, is there, is there a motion of some kind? Or do you want to continue on? Entertaining motion to table?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any comment? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the discussion on deck setback ordinance. Could there be a reduction in setbacks or eliminate the setbacks for decks? See in your, in your packet, comments, any, any comments that you'd like to add? Kelly or Kristi or anybody, anything? All right, so I think some of the part of this stems from the concept, I mean, where did, Kelly, the way this is drafted discussions, could there be a reduction in setbacks or eliminate the setbacks for decks? Wasn't it more part of an overall discussion perhaps at looking at, at least I recall, that it's, some of these changes can take place to maybe give an advantage or encouragement for a single-story home and look at reducing some of the setbacks to, just to give an advantage to, to reduce the massing in that sense?
I believe it was.
So from that end, I think it would be helpful unless there's an overwhelming, we can talk about it now, obviously, but we should, we should look at it in context with the other, other things. It would only make sense that it be in context with the other items, perhaps towards single-family homes and, and single-story residences and, and that enhancement. But any comments with respect to this?
I'm ready. Karen Bamber, town engineer. So this was changed to five feet around 2021. It was three feet before that. And we added two feet because of the landscape and drainage, having that room so it could get, so there could be pervious area for the water to sit or to get pipes in there and the exfiltration, like so that we get a room for all of that. That was the purpose, some of the purpose. I couldn't find anything else, but I know that that was some of the purpose.
So I lived here long enough to remember the time when we didn't have that setback. Bless you. And, and that, it doesn't work either. So when the, when the pavers and decking went right up to the property line, it was very intrusive on the neighbors and I don't remember when we changed that, but it was long before 2021. It might have been in, maybe in 99 or two, early 2000s when we, when we brought that in. I just don't remember. Or we started to enforce it, one of the two, because it did not work. So that, that five-foot setback, my own personal opinion is not bad. And if you really go out to your backyard and look at that, you'd realize that I know there's some on the commission and others that may have a differing opinion, especially with a, with a sidewalk or with a.
And a retaining wall fence.
Yeah.
Landscape.
Yeah.
To put all that in there.
Yeah, thank you.
So is this kind of more two different thoughts here? Because one, we had this flat roof discussion about a year ago of coming, bringing a single-story down and then having a slower or a lower grade of roof, I believe is the right way to say it. And for that, you would be able to have more building area on the lot. But this, this seems different from that.
It does.
And it does reference it at the end, which is kind of confusing.
Yeah, that's an odd placement for that. Did you notice that?
Flat roof usable areas.
Kristi, why is that? And then, I'm just curious. Why was that there? I have that underlined. I mean, any reason?
My, my assumption is that because, I think there was some confusion because the first sentence talks about deck, patio, driveway, parking areas. And there might have been some confusion as to whether that was inclusive of a flat roof usable area because that's where you could actually have a first-story outside deck. And so I think that clarification was to make sure that that wouldn't be within five feet of someone's property line.
Okay.
That it would have to be with the building setback.
It's just kind of odd the way it's written. I think we can clean that up for the next go around. What's the pleasure of the commission? What would you like to do? Any discussion on this? Do you want to bring it back when we talk about the overall? Are we fine with what's going on? I'm just throwing these things out to start a discussion of some kind.
Mr. Chairman, it seems five might be a bit excessive, but, so three sounded more reasonable to me, but I feel very strongly behind.
I like five.
I think with, with the drainage issues and the other issues we seem to have dealt with in landscaping and every single application for a house, I think the fight probably gives us more flexibility.
I think so.
I think with the landscape buffer and, which is needed, I think, which helps in the drainage, helps everything, I'm okay with the five feet. I can see why sometimes on the side of the house, homes that, you know, a walkway going to the back, especially with the older ones, when we had a smaller setback, we didn't always have a 15-foot setback. We had a 10-foot setback at one time. I could see where that, that could be problematic.
That's my thought around the sides.
Yeah. But still, I think it, on balance, I probably would go on with the five foot unless there's some over. I mean, I guess we could, we could look at the, the side setback and say, well, you know, you could have a pervious. How, here's an artificial turf question. How does, if I put an artificial turf along the side, how can, can I go all the way to the, to the?
Artificial turf is counted as in pervious? So it's the same.
It's the same as a deck?
Yeah. No.
It's the same as grass? Okay. All right.
That's in the code.
Okay. So theoretically, somebody can put a artificial grass walkway on the side of their home. I assume, I think the DEP is going to increase, the state's going to increase the rights for artificial turf. That makes sense. I mean, I think we're a little restrictive personally. But anyway, so what's the pleasure? No change now, bring it back with the others?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, is that the consensus?
Mark's consensus.
Okay. So there it is. Well, no change now, but bring it back with, with the discussion of, of changes to the single-family residence. I don't think you need a motion or anything. All right, next on the gentleman, agenda, excuse me, the discussion of landscaping ordinance, tree ordinance, and determining whether protecting canopy is necessary. Okay, this ought to be a lively discussion, no pun intended.
Maybe someone can explain those to them.
Okay.
Protecting the canopy. What, oh.
I, yeah. Who, who wrote it?
I don't understand.
I know it has been an issue for, at least since I've been here, has been an issue on how much landscaping, tree coverage you should have. It's been a debate for a while. I know it was on the planning zoning list almost every year to discuss. And then they made this list last year. They said they wanted this back on there. So I said, do we need to alter it? What do we want to do with it?
Is it for purposes of aesthetics or shade or?
Yeah, so one other thing that was not included in this, if you look at what article this is in, it talks about multifamily. So it actually isn't for single-family residents and that's why it says that in the memo. But I know in the last planning zoning, there were people that wanted canopy trees in the front yard. For aesthetics, I think.
So it's aesthetic. So versus a palm tree, is it?
Yeah, so palm trees.
So oak tree versus a palm tree?
Yeah. So the shade, basically.
We can have, you can have palm trees.
You can have.
Excepted out of it.
Yeah.
That's the irony. That's okay.
But it does talk about average mature trees with the canopy. So that's not a palm tree.
Well, you can combine them.
Yes.
Have we had any type of issue with respect to this particular provision? Or, you know, even though this applies to multifamily, but assuming it applies to single-family, has there been any, any issues? I mean, people seem to, yeah, I think when we were talking about the tree ordinances, some of the things that I objected to was not necessarily this, but more or less, do we really need to get a permit to, to, to go through that process and waste town time and everything else? We, we, this town survived just fine for a long period of time without that BS. I'm sorry. And so all of a sudden, now we have to have people and, this really came home when a neighbor, that somebody knocked down their tree and you know, I was like, really? Somebody else did the damage? He replaced it and got in trouble because he didn't get a permit to replace a tree that was knocked down by somebody else. I mean, where's the common sense here? I mean, it just, it, it doesn't fly. And I think when we brought this up at some point in time, those types of issues are some of the things that we needed to look at, not necessarily the canopy aspect. Saying that, I will go, sorry, to go back a little bit in history with the town, is that early 2005, when we have the five hurricanes that hit the state.
Four.
What's that?
2004.
2004. It was an interesting time in our town. We got, we got hit pretty hard, but not structurally, tree damage. And FPNL came in and said, guys, you have, you're, you're not trimming your trees, you're not, you know, we, they went through this whole thing and they were right. You know, we, you know, we're a lush area and we were not, we didn't have the right trees put in. And I found it very ironic that when, you know, fast forward 20 years or whatever it was, 15 years, and we passed this type of ordinance, I was smiling at the same time is because 15 years ago, we were trying to not have this type of thing. We wanted more trees that had wind resist, had, had freedom of the wind and, and everything else. So the type of trees that they're actually promoting is a thing that actually got us in trouble to begin with. So there's, it's like, okay, it was a hedge scratcher, but I didn't say anything. But maybe it's something. But if it's not an issue and we're keeping on top of it, so be it. I mean, the worst thing you can put in is a black olive tree, but anyway.
Or a ficus.
Or a ficus. And those provide canopy. So now what?
They'll set out the canopy every year. It's not practical.
What's the pleasure of the board? This was going to be a hot topic. Come on, you guys said you want to spend time on this.
I'd like to. I'd like to know what the town commission specifically is looking for in this request because it seems so vague to me.
Mr. Chairman, I'm also confused that's the request, so.
I don't recall them talking about the tree canopy. I really don't. I don't recall the commission talking about it. I think it was more about those other items that I mentioned.
This was on their list.
The canopy, just the way it sits.
Exactly, yes.
All right, so.
Because it's multifamily, though, not because it's single-family.
They're asking it to be, yeah. I mean, the way I read it, adding the single family.
Oh, adding the single family? To make this applicable to adding to the single family?
If you look at, you know, as a member of policy 1.1.1, it actually talks about adding the single-family residential.
Yeah, so if you look at, you have to look at the beginning.
I think the point behind this is to expand the scope of what the statute currently covers.
Thank you.
Multi-family, the single-family, and then go from there.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I know from a historical standpoint that, you know, if you go to other towns, they have very specific landscape requirements for new development, especially a single-family. We don't have anything, so it's kind of, you know, when it comes before this board for a development plan review, it's kind of up to your discretion during your architectural review, whether or not you think there needs to be more different type of tree, you know, when they have the landscape architect here to say, hey, could you maybe add this or change this? Otherwise, we don't have those specific requirements. And I believe in the past, they were talking about, maybe we should have specific requirements to say, you know, you need three shade trees or you could have, you know, more palms or, for less shade trees, something like that, some standards so that when they go through the initial review with staff, staff can say, you meet the requirement, don't meet the requirements, which is more typical of most municipalities, that they say, yeah, they meet the landscape code. So I think that may be part of the issue, whether or not you want to prescribe specific requirements for single-family.
So section 66, 119, I didn't, I didn't actually open up the book and look at where that is applicable. So it doesn't apply whatsoever to single-family residences, only to, to new development, multifamily?
Yeah, if you go to 66, 116, I think that's where it says multifamily.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, is this something like, I think you suggested a few months ago, where we had marine contractors come in and tell us about best practices they're seeing around different municipalities, that maybe that'll give us some guidance for this particular request to bring in landscape architects?
I've been amazed for the number of houses that we've reviewed since I've been on the commission, how much of plan is in fact the landscaping plan. So I mean, I think the homeowners are doing a good job of having a lush property.
That's just what they want.
So it's, I don't know that it's an issue or that we want more.
Right. Also, when you were discussing landscape permits, I suggest keeping that because they have to go to DEP or they have to go to health permit and make sure that they're not putting it on top of their septic system. Because a lot of, we don't have all that information if it's old and they tell them where it's at and don't put your trees there. Replacing the same, I get that, but adding new and being on top of underground, you know, septic or drainage or anything like that, they might not know where it's at, so.
Yeah, I would agree with you from that standpoint, but replacing what's already there.
Yeah, yeah, it's just like the driveway. You can replace what's there and then.
Right. Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
Although, actually, I have one question there. Isn't there a permit requirement for also the removal of existing landscape?
Yes.
Yeah, because that gets them more confident too, right? When it doesn't actually interfere with the septic system, only because my neighbor pushed you about this exact problem today.
Yeah. Well, that would be, we don't have a code for it, so there's no.
There's a, there's a state statute, so for single-family residents, if a tree is dead or dying or it's a danger to property and you have a certified harbors provide documentation of that, you can remove that tree without having to come to the town. Town's preempted for single-family residents in that regard. Otherwise, if you're removing a tree in town, we do have a requirement that you get a permit to remove it. So that would apply across the board to multifamily.
It goes back to your intrusive comment.
So then, is some of the, some of the reason why we had this tree permit is there was a period of time when there was over, there was a few times, not that many, but it did happen when there was a, what I'll call a historical tree, that people would see, right? And then they would cut it down and then the neighbors would get all antsy and excited about the fact that somebody cut it, their own tree down. I don't know. I, I, I see it, but then again, I'm the freedom of the property right too. I mean, you know, it's their tree. If they don't want that tree there, you know, for safety or for other reasons, for their family, that's, you know, it's a whole nother idea, concept.
And, Mr. Chairman, it's not that difficult to get an harbors to give you an opinion.
No.
So I'm, I'm just saying, having gone through it.
Ah, okay. You're not making any admissions here, are you?
No, 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 no.
I hope not.
Nothing like that.
Well, he didn't turn his mic on, though.
I'm just saying, they didn't charge a lot, that's all.
All right, so I think, I think, I think the, the staff raises, raises a good point, however, and I do agree with you that, you know, that I think residents, residents want to come in and, you know, when they're spending this kind of money on property, they care about the property. There's a general sense of that. I can go back in time on Harbor Drive, the one house on, on South Harbor Drive, when it was built and the whole town, this was early 2000s, and everyone went crazy because they built a flat-roof house, still there. I think, I think they put, doctored it up a little bit. There was a flat-roof house and they, they were very minimalistic on the landscape. That is the only time that I can ever recall in the 35 years I've been in this town, that that was ever an issue. And it ultimately didn't become an issue because it was, it was handled and, and, you know, looking now, we have flat roofs all over the place.
Would you say that the houses that have come before, the single-family houses that have come before the board, I don't know, the last 10, have they complied with this proposed new ordinance?
Oh, in terms of like, it's not single-family, but they.
Single, if we applied this to those applications that came with those very nice landscaping plans, would those have complied with this?
I mean, I don't want to say yes or no because I'm I mean, I don't want to say yes or no, because I'm not like this. But, yeah, people like their landscape, you know.
Seems pretty close.
To have a minimal landscape.
I mean, I think the landscapes look great on those.
But I think there's some species, do we have any restrictions on species, like, like olive trees?
Yes, there's your own restriction.
So we're already covered there, and that has to do with the root system as well? Does that have to do with the root system as well versus them having blackberries that fall off and stain everything, or is it, is, what's the?
I, non-invasive, you don't want non-invasive trees. But, yeah, there's a, there's a table.
These are the ones that are prohibited.
Okay.
Removable and, that can't be removed. And then.
Is there anything in this multifamily requirement that we wouldn't want to have in single-family?
I don't know if it's.
I mean, I, well, I saw a single family reasonable. Five-foot trunks and 18-inch, you know, low vegetation would install, and I don't know, that just seemed pretty practical to me. And a, and a canopy, you know, looks like an oregah palm, you know, several oregah palms. All seemed to work for me. I don't know why. We would just suggest the same thing, this juncture.
If it doesn't work, it'll come back in front of us.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think it, I, I think, didn't you raise the fact about maybe bringing somebody in? I, I'm not, I'm not an arborist. I'd be the last person on earth to, to know what makes sense and what makes sense, doesn't make sense in terms of specifics. I think that I go along with the general nature of the provision, and I think that's more to help the staff and, and Kristi, and when, and Corey, when somebody comes in, they can at least tell them, you gotta have it, right? I think they need some, some, some help on that. What the specifics of this are, especially with the respect, respect to the trees, I don't know, I don't know if that's good, bad, or indifferent on a single-family home, you know.
Well, I think, I think one thing that's not being touched on here, since it does refer to in the last section, you know, we talked about lawn grass, there's no discussion of artificial turf.
Well, yeah, because it's in the other code.
Right. I think probably then you should refer to that, right? To clarify that's covered.
Well, yeah, this is more of a tree.
Looks way through, they catch all the bottoms, eh?
It's, it's compromising.
Yeah.
Well, if not this list that we already have for multifamily, maybe the commission can tell us what they want in a canopy. Does that maybe kind of put it back?
Well, no, no, it's, it's up to us. We have to, we have to advise, our, our job is to advise the commission, not the other way around. So we have to.
Do we know, do we know what protecting the canopy is necessary means? I don't.
I mean, are you talking about with the respect to the request?
The subject.
Yeah, the subject.
Subject, yeah. I see what you're saying.
I don't know if the canopy means certain species of trees that provide more shade.
Yeah.
As opposed to palm trees.
Why don't we try this? Why don't we look at this as a blank slate? And just look at the whole, look at and say, does this make sense to apply to a single-family residence? And does it make sense, you know, that the, the canopy that's in two, C2A?
You mean ask a landscape architect?
That's what I.
Yeah, I mean, I think we, I think we should maybe get a view from, I think, you know, you suggested.
But if we're going down a road, that's not what they want us to pursue.
Yeah, but, no, no.
I think it's a quick question, just bring it back.
Well, I, I think, I think our concept, though, I don't disagree with that, but at the same time, I think we're, if you, if you go back six months, when we were talking about what the PMZ would be reviewing, is the whole thing, not specifics. So, does this make sense in its totality to be applied? And in what, and what portion of it should be applied to single-family homes? Then, you know. So within that context, we're going to answer that question regardless of what happens.
Well, I see it's tree ordinance and determining whether protecting the canopy is necessary.
That's what they're asking, but we're.
So are we going to go down some other path and say, this is what you're thinking?
No, if you look back as to initially, what they wanted us to review is they wanted us to review topics within, not specifics necessarily. I don't know where this specific issue came up, and we've already determined that it may not have been a specific issue, but somehow morphed into it. So I think if we look at this in its totality, right, and say, does this make sense? Should we have this applicable to a single-family home? I think that's the better question to ask. And if we need to bring in, you know, it wouldn't be a bad idea to bring in a landscape architect.
I, I think it should. I mean, what would we do if a, a house plan came in front of us and it didn't have the landscaping? It was a, it was a minimalist design of, you know, I want to have.
Or zero space.
Right. I think we would say, no, you have to put something, where does it say that? So having.
True.
The, the regulation might as well, and why not have it be the same as the multifamily if it's compliant?
And 66, 117. So I'm pretty sure if you go to 66, 117. It does talk about all lot, you have 24% of the total area in landscape to open space, so that's multifamily as well.
And single-family.
I mean, that's single-family, it's all.
So it does apply?
It does apply, it's just not necessarily the requirement of the.
Canopy.
From what I understood.
Okay.
This seem like a solution in such a problem?
Yeah.
I think, Mr. Chair, if you recall too, a couple of years ago, there was also a movement in town to perhaps become a tree city, which a lot of cities in Florida aspire to be. And in order to be a tree city, you have to have a landscape code that requires a certain amount of trees on every property to be developed. So I think that's, one of the things that got this going was to look at, if the town were to become a tree city, what changes we would have to make to our landscape code. And that's one of them for single families, to identify how many trees you need, what type of species, whether or not you can exchange shade trees for palm trees, which is typical in other cities. So I think that's another thing that may have gotten this landscape issue rolling in terms of protecting the canopy, or building a bigger canopy to be a tree city.
Well, keep in mind that we are a barrier island, subject to high winds coming off the ocean. Our, our requirements should be a little different than just an arbitrary.
Well, salt tolerance as well. Seen a lot of species killed, some, you know, driving salt air for a week. So how about get the arborist to, or, excuse me, the landscape architect, whatever.
What do we want to ask him, or her?
Well, what, what type of trees should we consider requesting? And what are you seeing as far as density of trees?
Okay, maybe, maybe take a look at our, this provision, and I'll, I'll get an opinion as to, you know, the practicality of this provision and any suggestions that they might have. That, that's a fairly easy ask, and I'm sure we can find.
But this refers to the list of the allowable and unallowable trees, doesn't it?
Well, they'd have to look at, we'd have to pull this code out and say.
Right, it's the full code, not just this.
Not just that provision.
Okay, okay.
And, and get some, some idea. Do we have, if you need help finding a landscape person, let me know.
Yeah, because shade trees kill grass, so you got, you know.
And they cause other issues, right? And, you know, this whole concept of being called a tree city, I'm not, I don't get hung up on labels like that.
Well, I can see that.
Yeah. We're blessed. We, this is probably, you know, we have a lot of landscaping in our town, you know, through the mangroves, through other issue, you know, other areas. So we don't necessarily need the label. I think we do pretty dug on good without the label. So, is, is that the consensus? That we try to find a landscape architect or an arborist to come back?
Yeah, I think we need.
Okay.
I think, I think we should have more than one, like we did with the marine contractors.
Okay. Okay. All right, we'll try.
I don't think I have a single nicely, relatively new house, lots of trees, not a single shade tree, all palm trees.
Well, I think also what we're going to find is that it's going to be harder to apply this to single-family because our issues are quite different from multifamily projects, because again, size of property. So for example, it's impossible for me to put a shade tree in my front yard due to my swell and my leaching field for my septic. So you can put one on the side, but you can't put one in the front yard at all. It's just impossible. And I think you're going to find that applying massively through the community.
If you have that shade tree on your side yard, you have to have artificial turf, because no grass will grow up under it.
Exactly right.
Well, and then tack onto that the 15-foot canopy. Where's that canopy going?
My neighbor's a wolf.
So, I mean, there's some practice, I agree with you. I mean, I think you're, you're right on this.
I'll be making carp drives south even more popular than before.
Yeah, right. Okay. And do you need any further direction than that, if you need some help, let me know? Any else? Is that a consensus on that?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to discuss on, you guys, why did you talk about this so much?
Mark.
All right, that's it on the discussion. Acting items, commissioner comments? Any comments?
Very well-run meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Comment?
Very well-run meeting.
My name isn't, oh, thank you. I don't need that.
I'd like to compliment the chairman on the speed and efficiency of this meeting compared to the last one.
I do have, I do have two comments. I hate to do them now, see, I'm, your thanks are going to go away now. So I have talked to Christie about this before. There's three non-conforming lots that are on the south end of town, what we perceive to be three non-conforming lots, right? That we need to address. And I'll turn it to, we did not address those, or at least I don't think we did, when we handled the other things along Old Ocean, if you recall. So we need, they need some direction for us to direct them to do this and to come back to us with a suggestion. Is that correct, Christie?
Yes. So you're talking about the RSE, residential estate, the bigger lots.
These state sections.
In our code, we have a certain width, depth, total lot requirement, and there are several, or three, that don't meet those basic requirements. And when you don't meet those basic requirements, technically you really can't redevelop because it's a non-conforming lot. We don't know if it's non-conforming in that it was legally made non-conforming or illegally. And what I mean by that is, in the past, what has happened, and this is what set off doing the issue on Old Ocean, was folks would have a bigger lot, and they'd simply just go to the property appraiser's office and get a new PCN and split it, and sell off one half of it, without coming to the town to check our zoning code to make sure that they now are selling off a legal lot, and that it's wide enough, deep enough, and big enough to actually be developed in that zoning district. So you've had some lots that have been illegally subdivided. It's not cog when they come in for development and it gets developed, and now they have a non-conforming lot, that it's legally non-conforming. Other times in the past have been done legally, perhaps ways back in town before we had some of these law requirements. So technically, it's a legal, non-conforming lot. And that gets tricky when they come back in for redevelopment to try to determine, is it legal or not, is, you know, and those types of issues. So like we did on Old Ocean, we sort of said, okay, we're just going to make them all legal, conforming lots, and set out specific development requirements for them. So what Ken has mentioned is going through that process to look at these three lots to see, do we need to just sort of, at this point, say, okay, we're going to just treat these as, as conforming lots and figure out how to deal with them separately, or go in a different direction. But when Ken and I talk about this, I said, before, you know, we take direction, we like to get a consensus from the board, that the board wants staff to look into this, because obviously, time, to have Corey, myself, whoever, look into what we need to do in this area.
Personally, I don't think we have a choice. You know, this, these are old properties that, similar to Old Ocean, and that industry and that whole area, that people just did. And I think, you know, we just have to, you're talking 30, 40, 50 years ago, these properties. So we got to bring them up to date. I don't think we have much of a choice, because it does impact those properties.
Could you pull up on maybe property appraiser, appraisers, the Shiebles house, just to show, sort of you guys can see a visual of what we're talking about here? This might help you understand what's going on. I don't know the address there.
Did this come up because it's for sale, the buyers?
Steph has gotten some questions.
I, I gotta tell you, I recall when we were talking about this while she's trying to find that. Was that it? Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, the three properties are, you can see them. There they are.
Yep.
It just, it's, you know, it's one of those things that, that just kept on being passed on down the road, and no one thought anything of it. Oh, and, and so now, we're in, we live in a different society.
So was the Shiebles carved off the, the triangle house? Because there's a public road there, isn't there? Or was that road that shared?
Oh, that's the strip.
Yeah, no.
No, that's Edith, right?
Edith.
And you had the Olafsons, right?
Yeah, I know that guy's.
So who knows? Historically, at one, yeah, Tom. Who knows? At one time, those all three might have been the same. Who knows?
So.
But now, today, in today's world, they're considered non-conforming. So, you know, in fairness to those properties, we.
What's that do for their title? For title insurance?
Well, it has nothing to do with the title insurance. It has more to do with the value of the property and what they can do.
If they were damaged.
Going forward. You know, if they wanted to remodel, if they wanted to tear down, build a new home, whatever the case may be, they would be restricted to a great extent. And you can't expand a non-conformity. You know, there's all sorts of things that come into play. So I think we need to, these are the last three lots, to my knowledge, that we need to address. We've already addressed the ones on, on Old Ocean. So I think we need to be consistent and continue to.
Is that one under construction on Old Ocean, and not a non-conforming lot? That, that half tear down?
Oh, you're talking about the one way down there.
Yeah, exactly.
5727.
Is that a, that is a conforming lot?
Yeah.
It is now.
Good question. That I can't.
I think we have four.
Well, it's too late now. They're doing something, right? They were approved, so there we go.
All right. Never mind. Great.
Would that have normally come before us, or because it's a renovation? I don't understand.
The amount of renovation normally probably would have if they're, they didn't get a new appraisal. They didn't have to hit substantial improvement.
Oh, they definitely hit substantial improvement on that.
They've got a new appraisal, so they have not.
Oh, my goodness. I need to find that appraiser.
He's the arborist.
Yeah.
Made as instructed. They're cousins, they're cousins.
You know, listen, if it becomes a better product, that's, so, the, the thing, let's correct what we need to correct, you know.
So what are our choices?
Oh, Christie, I'll let, I'll leave that other property up to you. But at least these three need to be, need to, you need to look at it. The choice is to direct them, to look into it, to come back with the, with the solution.
Relieve them of side yard setbacks and.
Whatever we did for Old Ocean would be very similar. And we would make them legally conforming lots. They would have to comply with whatever. Who's that?
Me, my phone vibrated. But it was only my brother, so I can ignore him.
Oh, go ahead and answer. Anyway. Any, any further direction you need? Corey, Christie?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I would just add, I think, I think you're right in terms of non-conformity. You have, you have side setback issues. Chances are on lots like this, you don't have lot size issues. But you may have issues of FAR, lot coverage, things of that nature. And I know that particular property, I think, inquired recently about an addition. And without a variance, of course, you can't, you can't expand a non-conformity. So if, if you want people to go through the variance process, that's one thing. But if you want to make them conforming and address things like the setback and FAR and lot coverage, it just makes the process work a little bit better.
I think they might have a problem with the five-foot setback on decks too, right?
Yeah, they're, they're, by code, they're supposed to be 100 feet wide. They're all about 50.
Yeah.
So we'll take a look at it and come back with some thoughts on it.
Yeah, you, you might, your thought might be, don't do anything, right? Who knows? And force the issue, but that, that's not a solution.
So that could be, from an FAR perspective, they could build much bigger houses if we relieve the setback requirements. Because they're big lots in square footage. Granted, railroads.
Use your microphone, please.
So they could be able to build much bigger houses on that if we relieve the setback requirement.
I don't know what's there, so maybe.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. I'm, I'm not sure exactly what's there.
I mean, it looks like there's a lot of house there.
Yeah.
You know, there's, there's a lot of, yeah, so who knows? But to clean it up makes sense. I mean, just correct it. I think it's better for the property owners and paramount, and better for the town, so that we don't have these issues. But there's no sense inviting it. We know that's an issue. Let's correct it. Let's fix it and move on with life. Is that the direction to be given? You need to know it or anything? Okay. Get consensus. The last thing I want to bring up, thank you, is I want to thank the staff. And I've told them this, I've had experience dealing with tangentially. It was interesting with outstanding open permit, and I just want to say that the staff handled it phenomenally well. I saw firsthand the correspondence that they were given to the. I saw firsthand the correspondence that they were giving to the, to the, to the property owners and to the, to everybody involved, including the contractor. And they handled it with class, even though they were being pressured. Greatly. Not by me, but they were just being pressured. But they, they were very professional and thank you. I mean, I, I was, it was easy to say, you know what, you guys are doing a great job with that. Saying that, they need help. Help in the sense that, and I talked to them about this. And this is pervasive throughout the state of Florida. And that is contractors leaving without closing a permit. And it's causing a problem for the property owners and they don't know. Our residents don't know. So I think we should develop, and I'm going to, I'm going to think and maybe work with Kelly and the staff to come up with some process that we can alert the property owners that they need to have this in order to close up for something because it's creating, it's an issue. The state has tried to address it and, and, but there's some gaps there that I think would be helpful. Because it's putting a lot of pressure on the staff, too. Puts pressure on the property owners and puts pressure on the staff to get these things accomplished when it's the contractor that really screwed up. And in this case, it was a contractor that closed up, opened up in a different name, and they caused it's another problem. But anyway, I think, but I want to thank them for, for doing a great job. I saw it firsthand, so.
Thank you. I did speak to Mike and asked him how other communities handle this, you know, with not closing out permits. And he says it's just something that happens everywhere. He said there's not really much you can do.
Well, that's why we change things. That's, when I hear there's nothing much we can do, that's when we say, no, there is, there's, there are things we can do. We can alert the property owner and say, listen, you need this at the end. You don't pay your final bill until you get this. You know, these are the things that you need. Now, if they don't do it, that's another story. We can't prevent that. But at least we can help, we can help that process by alerting them because the people don't know. They just don't know that they, the contractor needs to finish it. And to, and then they find out three, five, two, whatever, years later. And it creates a problem and an expense. I mean, a big expense for, for a contractor's malfeasance.
I thought there was a notification process for if the permit goes overdue. Because I'm, is, is there such a thing within the town? I remember getting a notification.
About the closest thing is if you're in a active job and we haven't seen any inspections from you. Because normally an inspection will extend your, your permit out to the inspection. But if we don't hear anything, like I just recently had one yesterday, it's been going on for about a year for a seat wall, no inspections at all. And it expired. And we noticed it the day after, we just happened to notice it. And, but there is no notification or anything. We did contact the contractor because we know by people talking that they are still working on it. So we did email them and say, hey, your year expired. But that's the only.
I did, I remember receiving a, a notification about a, a permit that had expired. And I got a note on a piece of mail saying.
Yeah, it's not something our system does. It's something we have to actually go in there and do. It's a problem that it's time.
So maybe that's, I don't know, if there's a way of generating automatic notification.
How about a bond requirement for that specific item for the contractor?
This, this was a very.
You know, it's interesting you said that because I thought, you know, could we have a deposit of some kind?
Make a bond.
That, you know, like a $250, $500 deposit that they have to put up and they only, they only get it back if they close the permit. I don't know. That's, I don't know if we can legally do that, but.
I, I think you're going to have a contractor who's doing a, a few thousand-dollar job that required like, you know, fix an air conditioning or put a fence up. It's, it's going to be an issue.
Yeah. Anyway, that's, it's food for thought, I think.
Open-minded.
The reverse might be better to incentivize. So perhaps a discount on your permit to have them finalize it. But you have to, nowadays, your building fees are so highly regulated that we'd have to go and look at how that could actually work. And it might take more time to do that then.
Yeah.
The other thing you can do, obviously, is you can always make a complaint against the contractor's license. And I know sometimes there's a reluctance to do that. But for some of these contractors that do it over and over again, that just don't close out the permit, sometimes that makes a point.
Yeah, true, good point. And I like the incentive, I, I love incentives. So that it's in reverse, so the same thing, we'll just charge more.
I typically, before paying the last bill, I want to get that yellow piece of paper back from the contractor with, I mean, I, it seems like a.
You're, you're the 5%, though.
Okay.
Yeah, no, no one knows. No, no, no one knows. Anyway, I don't need to belabor the point.
It, it is easy for the homeowner to go on and look at their permit to see if it's been finalized.
True, but.
The likelihood that we have.
Tells, you know.
But it is available.
And I, and I don't want to do something that puts the onus on the staff. That's not the intent here. I, I don't want the burden to be shifted that we have an obligation. That creates the liability for, for the town. That's not the intent. But just to alert the property owner that they need to, to be aware of that aspect, that they need this at the end of the project.
Like an affidavit they can sign at the beginning so they know or something?
Are those going to sound that they won't read it?
Yeah, but, you know. Some big yellow card that goes in the package, then you need this, but, you know.
We make them sign a handbook that states all the rules that they're supposed to abide by, but they don't read it.
And whether they, whether they actually sign it is another story, by the way. Anyway. Okay, anything else? Anything good for the, thank you very much. Entertained a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Vote with your feet.
Is there a single? Is there a single shade tree in any of those three lots?